All right, good evening. I call the November 18th City of Mount Vernon Council Meeting to order. I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda we have in front of us.
So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Communications. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? Please step forward now. Name and address.
Jenny K. Hampton, 719 Third Avenue Northwest. Yes, so I'm here as the former Chair of the Heritage Days Committee, and I just wanted to share the fact that I am stepping down and that we are looking for someone to take over the lead of it. And in the three years that I have been the Chair, we've been able to grow it. We are financially stable. We've been able to add events. We know that we had the rise last year, which was a success. But we are looking for someone to take it over, and I needed to publicly put that out there. So we would appreciate someone stepping up, because if nobody does...
That's it.
I don't know.
And for the most part, all the work is done for next season, correct?
Yes, I have already placed the facility part of scheduling, porta-potties, all of those things have already been taken care of, because that's a really easy, quick, couple clicks, sending some emails. And one band, Crazy Delicious, is already planned for Saturday night, so we would need a Friday night band. I have some leads for that already. But I mean, it's basically done. We just need somebody that's willing to be there, obviously, for the whole weekend and kind of man things and be ready to do all those little things that you can't predict.
And if someone's interested, how do they follow up?
They can email me at my whole long name, jennychampton@gmail.com, or yeah, that's the way to do it.
Sounds good.
Well, thanks for the work you've done to this point.
Absolutely. Nice job on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Go.
Hi, everybody. My name's Joe Jensen. I'm the Director, Main Street and Marketing for the Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group. I had a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about, but first I wanted to tell you that we went to Des Moines. Chris went with us. We came back with a big fake check for $25,000 for Mike and Val's building. Valman's is going to get a redo on their facade. So I'm very proud of that. This is since in my tenure, this is four times we've taken people to the Challenge Grant. So that's always very exciting. We've started working on Shop Small Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. It's always the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 30th this year. It's going to be really big and really fun, and we've got a lot of really cool plans. And then we've also started talking about Magical Night, which is December 5th. So I just want to make sure everybody's got those dates on their, in their mind and on their schedule. Andrea was going to come today, but I don't see her here, so I'm going to speak for her. But Andrea is the Chair of the Chalk the Walk Committee, and the Chalk the Walk Committee, some of them are represented here behind me. But we had talked in our first meeting about making some changes to Chalk the Walk. One of them, I guess the big one, is that we're planning to go on both sides of the stoplight this year, First Street West and First Street East. I come here and mention this to you guys to give you and anyone else a lot of time to talk about this and get back to committee members before we make a final plan. So our proposal is to go on both sides, and we're going to go all the way up to Third Avenue and then all the way down to A this year. We'll see how that works. I know that some of the businesses on First Street East had hoped for a long time that we'd do that. We do it for other festivals. I think it's probably time we are growing.
Would A be like Polly Ann's?
Polly Ann's, yeah. From Polly Ann's up to Ann's.
Yep.
Right. So anyway, I think that was the big thing we wanted to mention to you, but that was all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Matt, do you have something to add?
I was up there to support Joe. Oh, thank you.
Did a bang-up job.
All right. Anybody else? Move on to the consent agenda, approval of council minutes from our November 4th council meeting.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public hearing. Public hearing on the restated Lynn County Fire District 1 City of Mount Vernon 28E agreement for fire protection and emergency services. I now open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Move on to Resolution 11-18-2019B, approving the restated Lynn County Fire District 1 City of Mount Vernon 28E agreement for fire protection and emergency services. Chris, I figure this is fairly routine, but...
Yeah, the main language, obviously, is on page four with the addition of that insurance. ICAP requested that we had it specifically spelled out in the 28E that we would list Lynn County Fire District. We're keeping the board intact, so it's not a true contract situation. At the same time, we own everything at this point now, so unfortunately, we had to re-approve the entire 28E in order to make this happen. So Lynn County Fire District has reviewed. They're okay with the changes. Just want to get this done so that we can... It's been about three years in the making.
Anybody have any questions?
Help me understand the insurance change.
So before, you've had two entities, Lynn County Fire District and the City of Mount Vernon, under the umbrella of kind of an advisory board that was made up of township trustees and the city, and each was made up by themselves. So we were more or less kind of a, I'll say, an equal partner, because we didn't share expenses 100% equally, but from general expenses we did, some of the purchasing we did. Now, the city is essentially buying out the equity that Lynn County has in it. This board stays intact, and that's the insurance portion of it, is we want to make sure that if the board, if somebody is to get sued, it will likely be the city, Lynn County Fire District, the board, the city council. So in order to make sure that we're all under one umbrella, we want to make sure that we can list them as an insured party, Lynn County Fire District.
Okay.
We assumed with the other 28E that we would just be able to do that. ICAP came back and said they wanted specific language added, and that's why you're seeing... There's some other small changes, but they're more clerical error that they caught going back through it, but that Section 9 on four is...
So this is explicitly laying out what we had already intended, basically?
Correct.
Just based off their recommendation?
Okay.
Anybody else? Otherwise entertain a motion.
I'd move approval of Resolution 11-18-2019B, approving the restated 28E agreement between the City of Mount Vernon and Lynn County Fire District Number 1 for fire and emergency services.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Weisler.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Roddenbush.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
All right. Next item, Resolution 11-18-2019A, approving the 28E between Lynn County and the City of Mount Vernon for First Street Overlay Project.
So nothing has really changed specifically with the project itself. This is the formalized agreement that we had talked about at a previous meeting. The one thing that I would say is Lynn County did reach out to this, to us, and let us know that the city, because this is coming out of, where this is coming out of Lynn County's budget, it's farm and market roads money, we may have to do some intersection work as far as ADA accessibility. So right now, they are looking at what that work would entail and what we would be able to get waivers for. About $50,000 is kind of expected.
Ballpark.
Ballpark.
Fifty per intersection? Or they're just saying...
No, additional dollars outside of the 426.
Because a lot of that work's already been done along that street.
There has been. But...
A lot of the crossings haven't been touched.
Just the sidewalks.
So it's what crosses First Street.
Gotcha.
And I think they had counted about 20 different crossings from Third Avenue to the bridge.
Twenty?
That was a rough number. They were supposed to be out today with the snowmelt, getting an idea. And some of them were as simple as just putting a truncated dome at the bottom, which is that pad.
Oh.
And then there's some that are going to need some rework.
Okay.
So would this be 50 in addition to the ballpark, 447, I think it was, or whatever? Okay, all right. And they would do the work as they're going? It's not like we would come back? Is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I mean, we're not going to do it for less than...
We still feel like it's a valid problem.
Yeah, we're not going to do it less than 50, anyway.
As long, you know, as I indicated to Nick, as long as it doesn't come back and it's $100,000 or $200,000, then I would still recommend moving forward with this 28E. I just wanted to let you know that there could be some additional work that needs to be done. And they're counting. There aren't obviously 20 cross-sections.
Right.
There's 20 individual points they point or counting, so...
Yeah.
So...
They might be counting 20 different, this panel, this panel.
Right. Each side.
So each...
And then you've got all the Cornell ones, too. I mean, there's a fair number of...
There are.
The mid-block ones that go to stairs will not have to be touched. Those are considered carriage access.
It just makes sense if we can get this worked on.
Yeah, as long as we have it in our project, let's knock it out.
Yeah, it's not going to go away.
No.
And like I said, as long as we can stomach another $50,000, as long as it's not a great deal more than that, I think, I just wanted to make you aware that that number could grow.
Good. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
You take county money, you have to do it to county standards. We saw that on the other intersection, where we took state money. Well, you have to do it to state standards, and it's not quite as attractive, but still a valid problem to do.
Well, and it does keep us, you know, moving forward as far as making improvements to our intersections, showing that we're attempting to comply as much as possible with ADA, so...
All right. I'll move to approve Resolution 11-18-2019A, approving the 28E between Lynn County and the City of Mount Vernon for the First Street Overlay Project.
A second.
Any comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
West.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Roddenbush.
Yes.
Weisler.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Roddenbush.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Next item, Resolution 11-18-2019C, certifying the TIF debt incurred in calendar year 2019 for fiscal year 2021 to the Lynn County Auditor.
So we certified another $500,000. That was for the police department purchase. Form 2 is essentially what we're asking for out of TIF, so about 600, what did I say? $650,000, give or take?
$40,000.
So we're within that window. We, like I said, we've been trying to stay within $500,000 to $750,000, so we're continuing to do that. The 2007 series is almost complete, so...
That's good.
Yeah.
I do want to point out, there'll be a... Spirit did not have time to send me the new documents. The new documents will have franchise fees listed on Form 2 that currently list the sewer and water plant depreciation accounts. So, and there'll be a date actually added to the document, so...
How are we urban renewal area number 00000? We couldn't have been the first. Like, how does that...
It's an auto fill.
Okay.
It has to be there.
It does that on every form that I've ever filled out in every city I've ever been.
Oh, it's the same?
Oh, it's the same for every... Okay. I assumed that it was because we only have one TIF district, if I remember.
It auto fills, and actually, there is a designation for it. The new form will likely have that designated area.
Okay. It was just curious.
So Spirit Financial fills this form out for us, so if they don't go and automatically put that number in, it'll just auto fill it to zeros.
Hmm. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I'd like a motion to approve Resolution 11-18-2019C, certifying the TIF debt incurred in calendar year 2019.
A second. Any comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Roddenbush.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Weisler.
Yes.
Herman.
Rose.
Yes. All right. Next item, 11-18-2019D, renaming Highway 30 to Business 30 within the Mount Vernon city limits.
So we received notification via Lynn County, not even from the state, that we would have to rename Old 30 as soon as the bypass opens. I do want to publicly state that we did not receive notification of exactly when they were going to open it. So I went to Des Moines with that check at 10 o'clock and got a phone call from Council President Herman at 11:30 noon, saying it was open, and we had no idea, no real warning. If you noticed, the email that I sent today with the press release actually was another forwarded email to me from somebody in the Cedar Rapids office. So Lisbon, Mount Vernon, Lynn County had basically two and a half weeks to try and come up with a name that all three of us would live with. It actually includes Cedar County, but they kind of went off on their own. For our purposes, we needed to maintain something consistent for emergency services. We didn't want three different names on existing 30. It's not flashy, but it's what we could all agree to for Business 30. I did send out notices to the property owners that have, currently have a Highway 30 address. I have talked to a couple of individuals. Apart from the course, I don't, you know, staying with us, they're not really happy about the short time it's coming into holiday season. I wish, you know, as I told everybody that's made contact with me, I wish I could do this differently, but I'm not given that option. So the post office, once this resolution is approved, I will take this to the post office. They continue, I believe it's 30 to 60 days, to forward mail and allows all the property owners to make the adjustments. I did speak to the dental office specifically, because I have to change all their medical records. So, so again, not something I wished for these property owners, but not much I can do about it either.
Out of our control?
The numbers are going to stay the same. Some of them had addresses that were just indicated as west. We don't recognize just west, it's southwest, but other than that, it'll be their name in Business 30 versus their number in Highway 30.
If I remember right, when Marshalltown did their bypass, they addressed their city thoroughway the same way as business.
Two cities done the same.
Yeah, it's a pretty standard.
And so I think it's pretty standard, and so I think that helps drivers to get a feel for what that is. And so I don't have a problem with it in that perspective.
It's not flashy, but it serves its purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, wish we had more information coming.
Yeah. Communication always helps.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I would move approval of Resolution 11-18-2019D, renaming Highway Old 30, whatever we're calling it, to Business 30 through Mount Vernon.
A second.
Any comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Rose.
Yes.
Weisler.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Roddenbush.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Roddenbush.
Yes.
All right. Next item, motions for approval, consideration of claims list. Entertain a motion when we're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the additional claim list as presented for this meeting.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of zoning code amendment request.
So our code is a little different in that some communities will allow citizens to fill out an application for a consideration of a code amendment. Ours indicates it has to come through Planning Commission or City Council, meaning they have to almost kind of present the idea to council before they start moving forward with the ordinance change. In this instance, we had an individual step forward to planning and zoning and ask for a review of the town center requirement that the first floor of all businesses must be used as commercial and can be used as residential. What they're essentially asking for is not necessarily the storefronts, but there are portions of the building that actually the first floor, just based upon elevations, become what would be the second floor of the alley side. The way our code is written, it's still first floor. So you have kind of the storefront area, and then you have the space back behind that isn't necessarily used for a commercial space. So what the applicant is asking for is for P&amp;Z to review that portion of it. So making sure that we maintain storefronts and the commercial space on Main Street, but then they had some limited conversation about how they can do that, whether or not it was a percentage of the first floor or square feet. P&amp;Z, however, did not want to go through all of the work of looking at various ordinance options if council didn't have an indication that they were okay with them doing that. So if this isn't an idea I think that you're okay with, at least considering, P&amp;Z didn't really want to go through this process. From a staff perspective, I would say that a lot of the commercial spaces are using less square footage, and it's dependent. So I hope she doesn't mind, but I'll use iron leaf press. Most of her storefront is right there in the front. I'm sure she utilizes the remaining of the first floor as part of her business, but what she utilizes kind of is what you walk into is right there in the front. So there is room, I do believe, to have this conversation and see if there's consensus. But again, before P&amp;Z started to really consider it, they want to negate your interest. So all you would be doing is saying, yes, P&amp;Z, we want you to look at this. You're not locking yourselves in into any future decision. You're just basically telling them that, yes, we would consider possible language changes.
And obviously, they'll bring their requests forward if they figure...
Yeah, so what will happen now is P&amp;Z will go through and do their review, and they will present a recommendation one way or another. So they'll say, no, we've looked at everything, and we don't want to recommend any changes. Or they'll put language in front of you saying, this is what we're recommending that we potentially look at moving forward.
So what is the problem they are wanting to address?
The applicant, the individual interested? So they have the old video village, and there is quite a bit of space on the back half of that building that actually extends, and it's actually an addition, I believe, to that building. But it's considered first floor by ordinance, but if you look at it, all of their business happens in the front half of the building, which means that the space back behind is somewhat dead space, I guess.
So I'm sure they could use it as rental income, small business, additional income opportunities.
I can think of a few other examples, too.
The buildings are surprisingly deep.
Yeah.
They are. They're narrow, but they are deep.
For example, Scarlet Boutique is an example. That building, Scarlet Boutique is in the first floor, but then it extends back, and there's residents behind it.
And it's on, you know, so...
And that's one of those alley, it's actually second floor from the alley.
First Street sits right on the top of the hill.
Yeah.
And all of the buildings being deep go down and then drop off to an alley. So as I told P&amp;Z at their meeting, I don't necessarily have an issue looking at this. I think, you know, their concern was it was a hot-button item when they moved to eliminating residential on the first floor in the town center. They seemed open to this concept, making sure the storefront stayed...
That's the key, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Making sure the storefront stayed where they were, potentially giving those business owners another opportunity, maybe supplement some of their income.
I think that's...
Out of curiosity, when, and if you don't off the top of your head, but when did we eliminate residential on the first floor?
I do not.
Yeah, okay. I don't ever, I don't really remember it.
Yeah, I don't either, but...
It doesn't mean it...
It's been a long time, it sounds of it. Trudy Elliott remembers, and Truman Jordan both remember.
If those two are the ones that remember, then yes, it's been a long time.
Will this have any effect on taxing? Because there's commercial, residential, you changed part of a commercial building into residential. Does that affect the taxation then? Because you're going from, what, a 90-some percent tax to a 50-some percent jack? See, that's a big deal right there.
It already does. So if they have apartments up above and a first floor, I mean, you're talking about square feet at that point.
Right. I understand that up above it is...
So slight, I would say slight, yes, it could.
Yeah. That's something to think about.
But I guess I would be lying to you if I said that the dollars...
As little commercial we have in this town, you're probably going to eliminate another 25% of these back part of these buildings, so that's something to consider right there.
That'd be something Planning and zoning would look into. That would be part of their process or no?
Could it? Yes. That's not really...
That's what I was wondering.
I mean, they're looking at it from a zoning perspective, and that would probably be more of a council directive. I will tell you that the square footage that you're losing isn't going to move the needle enough in the grand scheme of things.
It's a good question.
There's just not a ton of square footage, and then, you know, honestly, the commercial tax base that you're getting in the downtown, those buildings aren't valued at $1 million plus. You know, they're kind of all over the board, so...
So right now, if you've got a building that, where the first floor is all residential, or all commercial, second floor is residential, if we assume that both of those have the same square footage, is it just X number of square feet is taxed at one rate and X number of square feet is taxed at the other rate?
It's not taxed at a different rate. It's the rollback.
The rollback.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. So if we, let's, so then we play it out, if then half of that commercial turns into residential, then that rollback would be different now?
It would go from 90% to whatever residential...
To 52 or whatever it is.
It's in the, so multifamily residential's in the process of stair stepping back every year over a 10-year period till it reaches residential levels.
Yeah, okay.
So it could go from 90, right now, it could go from 90 to 56%.
Gotcha. Okay. I'd be open to looking at it. I think it'd be a good idea to...
Make a motion.
...examine it. In that case, I will. I remove the...
I don't necessarily need a formal vote, I just need...
All right. All right. No lines, Scotty.
Is parking in an alley's an issue if it's going to be residential or doing more parking spaces? I'm not sure it's an issue with parking in an alley, but is there an implied obligation that we...
Oh, this, all apartments will only stress the parking issue.
Talking about unintended consequences of losing...
Yeah, Town Center is, has no parking requirements. I mean, as it does no setback requirements typically, so...
It's a good question, Tom.
So who does that evaluation of subject of anticipated properties that could employ this and what the perceived impact might be? Who, is that...
It honestly depends on what it is you want us to look at. So P&amp;Z is going to go through the zoning process and see if it makes sense from that perspective. And then it comes to you in an ordinance form, and if you would like staff to try, go through... I mean, the difficult part that we have is that we don't have building plans for each[1752.52] That's usually what happens when it comes here, so...
And other than asking every business owner, would you plan on doing this, it'd probably be tough to gauge.
He's left now, but would Joe know, basically, here's what, yeah, I mean, here's what percentage on a ballpark of each first floor?
No, because here's the challenge. I'll take the local, for instance, just because they're fairly recent. If you go into the local and look at how they've laid out, they're exiting, this won't be a possibility for them.
Right, yeah.
Obviously, most of the restaurants up and down, I mean, they take up between their kitchen, I mean, they're not going to have options. So I would say this is probably fairly limited.
Yeah, maybe five or six.
Maybe 50% of the buildings might have that option.
What's the thumbnail sketch of what this might bring?
Well, and the, well, and the flip side is that then, yes, it would stress parking that's already stressed, but it also theoretically would put more people on the street, looking at, you know...
Well, the challenge with the town center on the parking related issue is it's business based too. So a restaurant will tax parking more so than Iron Leaf Press, who doesn't have a lot of walk-in clientele, they do a lot of internet sales. So those businesses just happen to be in those locations now. And if you look at the evolution of the downtown, I mean, those storefronts change frequently. So the parking's a difficult one to gauge because, yes, adding additional apartments to the downtown will stress an already parking poor section of the community. However, so does changing a use from one to the next, depending on how challenging that use is going to be. So it's hard for us to sit here and predict how it's going to affect, other than that I can assure you it will.
And the first step is letting planning, zoning at least look at it. So let's do that and see what they come back with. Okay, anybody else on this? All right. We'll move on, discussion, consideration of change, change order number 40 for LBC. Keep in mind, this work's already been completed, correct, Chris?
Don't ask me why nobody thought about a power switch for the garbage disposal.
That was my first question.
They had to break into the CMU wall to put it in. The change order's in the amount of $1,751.95. I did give you a new printout of the, kind of the change order spreadsheet that I maintain. Even with this potential change order, you're still $250,000 in the good. And we're hopefully not going one, two months away from opening this building, so...
So everybody laughed at that, but that isn't funny, man, because this was here all the time. We didn't add this, right? We didn't add this washer, this dishwasher, garbage disposal. We didn't add it, it was there. See, so again, this comes to the darn architect. What the hell, I mean, this kind of, sure, it's 1,700, 3,000, I mean, it's, sometimes people have to pay for their mistakes and it seems like we pay for the mistakes and they should have caught this and it really irks me is what it does.
The challenge with this is, is it a mistake versus an omen? And so...
Either way, it's their job.
By law, if we would have had to cover the cost originally, now...
Not the block breaking out.
You talk about the markup and the maintenance, but that's the challenge that we have right now in front of us in order to fight this.
Yeah.
It just ends up, and I agree, there's nothing funny about this situation. It's, I'm only laughing because it's par for the course on this entire project for me.
Because like I said, I built houses, I built 35 houses in Indianapolis. If I did something like this, I'd eat it. Because that's my fault, not their fault. They had a dishwasher or a garbage disposal and I forgot to run stuff, I'd eat it. And if these companies that do this, architects or engineering firms had any scruples, any kind of balls to back up their stuff, they'd cover this stuff because it's baloney. That's what they're paid for, that's what their degree's in. They've done this forever. I mean, you've got tons and tons of years of engineering and architecture work and you miss this stuff and it's stuff that gets done over and over and over again. And it just, like I said, they should eat it. And it just makes you mad that they just say, well, you missed it, you've got contingency money, take care of it, so...
Who ultimately missed it, Chris? Or whose mistake was it?
It would be the architect, man.
In this instance, I'd have to go back and, I'm assuming the architect because it probably wasn't on the set of drawings. Now, you could go back to the contractor and say, why didn't somebody issue an ITC going, hey, there's no outlet here? I mean, you have subcontractors that look at it, they're supposed to provide shop drawings when they go through this process. You know, legally, it's a challenging thing to do. So there's fault probably on both sides, more so with the designers because they omitted it from the plan itself, but there's a lot of legal precedence here as well.
So the garbage disposal itself was covered and paid for?
Correct.
It's just this installation?
And that area would be CMU. So the cheaper, I mean, the cheaper option would be to run conduit exterior wall, but you have what amounts to a $7.4 million building and you don't have conduit with the exception of the exposed ceiling running on the wall, so...
I share Eric's frustration, but, you know, I hate to say, it's, you know, it's already been done and the cost of fighting it, you know, which of course is what everybody on the other side knows too.
Yeah, that's frustrating.
There does seem to be a lot of rework on this project. Official change order number 40, but that's not counting the rework projects that you've referenced in the past, the showers that aren't sloped enough, which I, in my last conversation with you, that was going to be a rework. And this seems like every time we go through there on a tour, they're reworking this or reworking that, or reworking that. And that hasn't even hit the 40, the list of 40 here, so...
Well, and you know, in that instance, when it comes to the showers, the architectural drawings do show fall.
Okay, they do show...
The contractor...
Okay, then it's contractor rework, okay.
Yes. So like I said, this is my battle every day. Sometimes it's the contractor or subcontractor. A lot of this has to do with the fact that the sequencing of this project leaves a lot to be desired. So there were drawings that were still coming in, you know, March, April shop drawings. So imagine this large set of plans that the architects put together and then the builders themselves put together shop drawings based upon that. Once those shop drawings are submitted, they're reviewed by the architect as well. But when they come in piecemeal, it's hard for the design firms to go back in and say, we just issued an ITC for electric, for instance. It will affect, you know, plumbing and mechanical. And so that's the rework that's been a struggle. There's also been issues, like they didn't work the steel before they painted over it. So Nick, Matt, myself, I mean, we're there every day. For us, it's worth it to make sure that we get a quality project when it's all said and done. It's unfortunate that we have to be there every day, but yeah, I mean, it's frustrating. Now, I can say that, you know, when you start with a contingency of 385,000 and you're still sitting with 250,000 in there, that's, that's pretty good for a government-based project that you took a little bit for.
So this is all new construction, we're not tying into two of the buildings where there'd be a more likely opportunity for change orders to be not...
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, Tom, I think, you know, I'm not patting anybody on the back, but I think the fact that the architects are over there more frequently because they live in town and they drive through, myself, Matt, Nick, we're catching a lot of stuff that's being reworked because we're being diligent while we're doing it. A lot of the times, this work just gets missed and you don't know it until you go back in and deal with problems.
But we also just approved a change order for the architects' time themselves.
Yeah, that's...
Remember, we talked about this.
They're supposed to be onsite.
For them to be onsite and to be more active, you know? And I'm glad you guys are there, I'm glad you can be there. I think it's important. I built a house myself before and I know what it's like, just on a residential property.
Yeah, they're onsite a lot more than any architect that I've ever seen. I can tell you that. I've never had a, I mean, most architecture firms hit the high points. We knew this going into this project, that's why we spent the additional 70,000 with Bronn InterTech to make sure certain things were being met. And I'm glad we did. Yeah. At the end of the day, I think we're going to have a solid building. There's just a lot of work that's going into it to make it happen.
Well, I think it's safe to say everybody's a little frustrated with this change order, but at the same time, we have to realize that there's not much we can do in terms of trying to fight it.
No, and in the long run, I think we'd all, and to your point about, you know, having a multimillion dollar building and not having a conduit, aside from the exposed ceiling, it's a pain in the neck, but I would rather we do it right now and not sit there every time I go into the room and be ticked off about this stupid little thing, you know? So, do we need to approve this? This is already done?
You still need a formal approval.
All right. Tommy, you have something?
I'm going to still retain the idea, the concept of taking that artificial percent by the architect, contractor, whatever, of what the contingency or what that is. I mean, they set that percent and that gives them, there's no upside for us, that they only, that we've got a cap. But it gives them an artificial opportunity, an opportunity to build up to that level. So not only, if the next building gets built under my watch and have anything to do with it, besides managing the workable days, the weather-related days, I think I'm going to have the conversation about, why do we need some percent contingency here, 6% or 5% or whatever, that it should be ratcheted down and they should be able to live with that. I mean, especially on new construction here, but, so make the mistake once, fine, but on the second time...
The only challenge I'd have that, Tom, is what we're going to talk about later on. So it's a similar contingency and there were a lot of unknowns with the wastewater treatment plant and we've blown through that contingency. So the challenge is, is...
That's an existing project though, you're not going with it.
I guess what I'm getting at from a challenge perspective is, is when you don't put the contingency in there, and for instance, this council borrowed $5 million, okay? We can borrow up to $5.5 million, which we likely will because of timing. But if you get that wrong, that $5.5 million, it's not like you can just run to the bank and borrow more. So the contingency being in there, although I don't like it any more than you, kind of has to be there because if you miss, you have to come up with those funds somewhere. And that's the challenge with being a governing body is, again, we either have to go and raise those funds if that contingency, let's, you know, if we were, if we set aside $8.2 million and this project was $8.1 million and we didn't, we ratcheted down that contingency and it came back $200,000, I mean, we have to come up with those funds. And Mount Vernon, for instance, is fairly solvent and it's okay, but I've been in communities where the dollars are very tight and you don't have that to just go and borrow from. So that's the challenge. I'm not necessarily arguing the merits of your, there are other things that we could do, I think...
You could make it so that the contingency wasn't, the architecture firm or whatever couldn't have put a percentage on the contingency fund. You could do that. I mean, well, they hit it. I mean, if it's $8.5 million, 300,000 of it is contingency, they hit it with their fee. And you could pull that out and say, okay, you can hit that, but this is contingency, we might not use it. And as we use it, you can add your percentage on. But because of $250,000, what's their percentage on that that we haven't used so far? That's a good chunk of change, so you could do something like that to make, to save a little, I don't know.
You'd probably save a little on the general contractor side of things, but not much on the architectural firm.
Well, they, their fee was pretty good.
Yeah, but it was far less, it was actually far less than what they quoted because the bid came in far less. So they went backwards.
Every little bit helps him, I always say.
I mean, realistically, we're going to be just fine on this project. I mean, from a cash flow perspective, we're going to make it through the construction process, not sitting here going, how am I going to afford the rest of this? That's a positive.
It helped that we have multi-income streams that were pretty generous.
Yeah, I can assure you, there is nobody sitting in this room that is more frustrated than maybe myself, Matt and Nick. But we can stay frustrated with it or we can make sure that the community gets what they paid for and that's what we're attempting to do and this is kind of part of it.
Well, to your point, I respect the fact that you guys, you know, obviously, there's some denials in here, there's some other issues. You're dealing with things that haven't come to us and I recognize that. So, you know, I feel like, you know, let's get the show on the road and approve these funds, you know? I certainly make a motion to, yeah, we need to.
There's a whole nother side that you haven't seen me, that's come out on this project, I can tell you that.
I know, and, you know, I just, I respect the amount of load you guys are carrying.
All right, Steph, make your motion.
Yep, I'm going to approve the change order number 40.
I'll second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
That said, keep up the good, hard work.
And it's only going to get worse the next two months.
I know.
Which, Chris knows that, but that's reality.
They don't call him Jamie Reyes Sunshine Hampton for nothing.
Well, they want to get done as soon as they can, so they're going to be trying to...
Well, I will tell you that if you're ready to move on number four, you know, this change order is going to be about $10,000 and it's a timing issue. And then there's nothing I can do about this one, other than I can say, yes, I'm going to recommend putting this additional sealant on, or we're going to sit here, heat the building, not at our cost, it's going to be the contractor's cost, but they have to hit a moisture percentage in order to get the warranties on the flooring that we need.
So again, we have no choice.
They're not going to put the floor down until they hit that percentage unless we do something like this. So, you know, I don't have an official change order for you, but I know it's going to happen between now and your next meeting. So as opposed to calling a special meeting to issue a change order that's going to be outside of what the mayor and I are allowed to approve, it's going to be in the neighborhood of $10,000.
So do we need a motion not to exceed?
I don't want you to put in a motion, I'm just telling you it's in the range of $10,000.
Didn't we pay to have different backfill put in there to reduce the amount of...
This is the track.
So this is a completely different area.
Second floor.
This is the second floor. The track has...
The second floor has too much moisture.
How is that possible?
Well, it doesn't, it's not, I mean, the moisture levels that they have to try and hit are, I think it's like 82%.
Yeah, I thought the track was 85%.
I mean, it's hard to do when the building, I mean, part of it is the building hasn't been completely buttoned up the entire time. There are two jet heaters that are going in there trying to hit those numbers and it is decreasing, but how long do we want to wait? We have people that are looking to rent this facility in February and, again, going back to the whole contingency issue here, you know, knowing that we have still a healthy contingency left and we have very little time, I'm recommending that we do this just so that we can make sure that we stay open. There's an epoxy floor that goes on the track.
Right. So before they apply it, they have to be a percentage?
Correct, it has to be the moisture content in the contract.
But what I'm thinking is, so you got these jet heaters going, but why in the heck for $10,000 or less than that, don't you get some industrial dehumidifiers in there and have them going at the same time to reduce the humidity?
Which they could. The issue is it's still not 100% buttoned up.
Yeah, they're supposed to get rain and snow.
And again, I'm telling you, this is a timing situation.
Yeah.
So in terms of the motion, what do you need from, motion wise?
I need a vote that you're okay with a change order that's potentially going to be in the range of $10,000, give or take a couple thousand dollars probably. I will run this by the council as soon as I see the actual paperwork, but unless you would like to call a special meeting when I do get it, just asking that you give a consideration now.
But you don't want a not to exceed?
I don't know what the number's going to be. So if you do a not to exceed and it comes up, you know, $10 over, call a special meeting.
Right, right.
I'm going to make motion to approve Chris's counsel here on acting on the potential floor-changing flooring change orders that may come up in the next couple of weeks and to act with our best interests in mind. and change orders that may come up in the next couple of weeks and to act with our best interest in mind.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, consideration of gear... Gear. Gear drive quote, 2019 water wastewater. Chris?
So I gave you a couple of pieces of information that was provided from B and K. It does look like we're probably going to have to amend our SRF. It's typically a big deal. We are, we'll have to go back through a public hearing process, but right now, we're expecting the project... The original loan amount was 1.8 million. We're getting to the point where we're expecting it to be somewhere between 1.878 and 1.9 million. So we'd be looking at another 100,000. You know, the unfortunate part, like I said, with this project is every time you pull out a piece that's been submerged for the last 15 to 20 years, you're finding something new. In this instance, again, we're replacing the screw pump. It doesn't make sense. We don't feel like to... And this is staff. So Alex is saying, "Why are we putting a brand-new screw pump into an old gearbox?" And the rebuild has the potential to cost as much as buying new. Emily is in the audience. She can explain a lot more than I can, but that is kind of the gist of where we're at with this. I think the gearbox overhaul was somewhere in the neighborhood of 20...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand?
So just to bring you up to speed a little bit on what... What is going on out there? I guess I'd like to reemphasize that this was originally not a full replacement of the pump. It was supposed to be a rehab and the intent was to try to rebuild the parts we knew needed to be addressed. Since then, we found some of the things we thought we could rebuild, we can't. The gear reducer itself was never part of, was never included and was never part of this project. However, it goes between the screw pump and the lower, and the bearings. And then you've got the gear reducer and then the motor. So at this point, we're approaching, I mean, that's the last major part of this pump that wouldn't be touched if we didn't touch it. And like I said, Alex was asking, "Why wouldn't we touch that?" I think the point emphasized was that our intent was to rehab and not completely replace the pump. And at this point, we're approaching that by replacing everything. But I can also understand his concern about putting that gear reducer back in. It is located above... So you've got the screw. I don't know if you're familiar with how it, but it is located up at the top of the pump, so it's not submerged. And unless I'm wrong, I don't know if you guys can correct me, I don't think there's any issue with it at this point. But anytime you have a 17-year-old piece of equipment, there's always a potential that there could, something could happen. And so he's saying at this point, you know, you've got this piece and the new motor, which the motor wasn't supposed to be new until the cost of, when they took it in and inspected it, the cost of that was gonna exceed the cost of a new motor. And so we've run into that a lot where it's like, you know, we could rehab it or the cost of rehabbing it's gonna be more than... But this is one item I can say, the city does have some options on. And that's why I came to Chris with this question. You know, do you wanna, do you wanna replace it at a cost of roughly $27,000? Do you wanna send it to a local shop and have them tear it apart? And maybe you'll save some money, maybe you won't. There's no way to know. Or, you know, you can leave it and take your chances and if something goes wrong with it, you're looking at tearing it apart and replacing, I mean, putting a new one in for probably about 30-plus thousand.
How long do those usually last? I assume we're past its life expectancy or no?
We're not having any issues with it right now.
I would say, you know, to ballpark it, it'd be really hard. I mean, some things run for a long time, other things will die. I mean, who knows? The new one could be maybe not made as well as the old one. I mean, we've all had the 30-year-old washers that have, you know, replaced it and the five-year-old one dies.
So what we're looking at, we've got this 18,967 and then these two basically $2,700. Is that total that 20, call it 24?
Twenty-seven.
Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah.
So it's the Lake...
On the Lakeside parts replacement quote?
Oh.
So there's three different parts. The gear drive, the brush kit and the backstop kit.
Yeah, all that.
It would be, all that is one.
Plus tax.
All right, gotcha.
So what happens if we leave it alone and it fails in a month? Then are, then is this just down?
So the pump would be down. I mean, you still have another pump, but we're only rehabbing one of the pumps at this point. So...
The pump goes down. We have these costs. Depending on what, depending on when it happens. So here's the challenge a little bit from a financing standpoint, too. We have the ability to go back to SRF now because it is a project. If we close out the SRF, this pump fails. We're coming out with $27,000 out of the funds that we have as opposed to the SRF funding. So here's been generally the point. We know that we're doing UV, half of this project or half this 1.8 million was UV disinfection. The other half was kind of doing some rehab while we had the whole operation down. Same thing is going to happen in five to seven years because we have to do the nutrient reduction portion of our permit and rehab the rest of it. So all in all, we expected to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of 3.5 million or somewhere kind of around there when we started looking at this project to begin with.
I guess from staff's recommendation on the point of where Alex is, so the other pump, we're leaving completely as is. So I guess our fear would be, you know, we put this brand-new gear drive in or we put the brand-new pump in and then all of a sudden the gear drive goes out of it. Well, now we're still, like, right now, we're dependent on that old pump right now, getting it to this point. So I guess kind of a recommendation on the staff side would be, hopefully then we don't have to touch this and in five years when that rehab happens, we know we're...
No, depending on a five-year-old pump instead of depending on a, at that point, 23, 22-year-old pump.
Yeah, so it's just more so into the future, I would say. Nice to see you.
Yep. That's a good point.
Yep. I, you know, I understand this needs to be new and everything, but what I don't understand is we surely aren't the first community that's redoing a facility. Are we, is everybody getting it done right at the same time? I mean, 20 years ago, 15 years, 10 years, five years ago, somebody had to have this done. There's thousands of communities, just in the state of Iowa, that have facilities like this. So I would have liked to have seen the engineering say, "Worst case," you know, or based on the many places that we've done this at, we found that these gearboxes are old and they usually need to be replaced at the same time and had that in there initially. And then when you go in there, "Oh, it's fine," and then you take it away rather than put it in. See, I just, I hope there's a lessons learned section of the engineering firm that says, "Hey, the next community we go to, we're gonna say, 'Hey, it's possible that the gearbox is gonna have to be replaced. Let's put that in there so you're not surprised like we are.'" That's what I wanna hear. I want, I don't wanna, "Oh, my God, this is an old..." Yeah, it's old. So why don't you just say, "It's possible it's gonna be replaced and maybe put it in there and then we don't have to redo our finances." It's always best to say, "We can take it out" rather than stick it in. But like I said, there's gotta be tons of these being replaced all over the country and we can't get that, an engineering firm that says, "Hey, let's make sure we got the contingency for this gearbox or this or that or we found conduit." I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, this is what engineering firms do. This is what architecture firms do. And it just seems that they're not doing their job. They're not researching history of other communities that have done this.
The only thing I would say to that, going back to our earlier conversation. So we've got a tail of two projects right now. We have one project whose contingency is too good.
Well, this wouldn't even be a contingency. This would be saying, "We're gonna replace it." And then we get in there, "No, we don't have to."
But the replacement part isn't necessarily part of the project that's being required by the state. I think everybody needs to understand that the UV disinfection and the nutrient reduction strategies were what was being required. Staff...
While we're in there.
Through the council has been requesting that we make these upgrades to the facility. And I'm not going to speak for the engineer because I have no idea. Now, I can tell you that I have been in five communities and the facilities are not the same. And in this situation, the UV disinfection is coming out of two clarifiers that both have... I don't even know what the term is. Both have an harm coming off of it because we have limited space at our facility. So there was a contingency in this project and it wasn't enough. Thankfully, the way the SRF works, we have the ability to go back in and ask for additional funding. So we're still back at the same spot regardless. Whether they're not borrowing that much money from the SRF or we're going and asking for more. So in this situation, I feel like...
But when you have an old facility, you don't slap lipstick on a pig. I mean, you know you're gonna replace other things that hook into it. You don't say, "I'm just gonna replace this section and not worry about the old section." You're gonna replace that old section, lots of it.
In the instance that we're talking about here, we expect it to rehab, not necessarily replace.
So there always is a decision along the way at some point to draw a line and to stop, I guess, would be my comment. We're not replacing the entire plant. We looked at replacing the entire screw pump, both of them, the cost for that. And it was felt that that was unnecessary. I mean, if we could, if we could look at that and looking at the screw pump, thinking maybe it wasn't in such bad a shape that we needed to replace the whole thing, we still haven't approached that. I mean, there's always a line. The question right now, I mean, something else that came up was, "Do we need to regrout the entire channel?" And that's, you can go, you can go all the way to the end and essentially complete a new plant or you pick a spot at some point. And I think what we were trying to do was pick the worst parts of it that needed the most attention. And that's what we did. If the instruction was to build in enough so that we would always be over and not have to come back and ask for anything, I guess.
The other thing is, is we're gonna be putting a lot more stress on it. I mean, we got two subdivisions going. I mean, we're building up. And so this facility is gonna take a lot more load. So you wanna put more into it right away to, so it will take on this extra load.
Right. But I think, you know, the one thing that I do wanna to point out to everybody is when we take that money or when we do these projects, keep in mind that my calculations to you were based upon 1.8 million dollars. This, don't take this lightly because this extends the sewer rate increase from five years to 10 years. I mean, there's repercussions that we were trying to look at here. So to answer your question, going back and staff was sitting right at the table saying, "Yes, we should look to rehab and try and save some dollars." That's because it comes out of everybody's pocket sitting in this room. Our goal in this was to try and rehab these pieces, most of which were in worse shape than what we had expected because they were submerged and you couldn't actually see them. But there's not a right answer and you're not wrong, Erica. I'm not trying to argue with anybody here. There's just a lot of moving pieces and we're trying to do our best by the way that we have to basically start projects is start with a budget number at the beginning and hope that we get it close one way or the other. SRF has a little bit more freedom because we can go back to them. Other projects, we don't. So we're, you know, we're not in the business of making sure that we take another $200,000 or $300,000 off the top and then give it back later. That's not actually how we do it. I mean, once you take that from the taxpayers, you take it from the taxpayer, so...
But it could always be used for something else.
Yeah, you should make it a payment, but you're, like I said, you're still taking it. So I, in my going on 19 years, never seen a fee increase go backwards.
Ultimately come down to...
That's our goal as staff, is trying to make sure that we're looking to the future, trying to get the projects done in the most sensible way that we can, keeping in mind that we're all paying the same fees, us included, going...
But I think people are more willing to pay for things that, I mean, water, their toilets flushing properly. And I mean, those things, people can swallow a lot more than other items. I mean, these are essential things. So, you know, yeah, it's tough that these rates go up certain areas, but there's a reason for it. You don't want your toilet backing up on you. You don't want your water coming out brown.
And I don't disagree with that, but keep, this isn't going to happen. This project has nothing to do with that. Our facility is at half capacity. So the new developments aren't going to tax us at all. Where we have issues is high rate events and sending a bunch of water that doesn't need to be treated down to the plant. That's our problem. That's not being corrected with this at all. So we still have to take that off. And that's the portion, I mean, to me, that's why you're paying staff to go, "Okay, we've got this problem. We still have to do what the state requires us to do and think about this." And know that we can increase rates 15% every year. So we're trying to jump.
All right, with all that said, ultimately, the council needs to make a motion or deny?
I'd approve, or I'd move the parts replacement quote provided by Lakeside for the gear drive, brushing kit and backstop kit.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. All right, next item, discussion, consideration of mowing contract for the Mount Vernon Cemetery. This should be a pretty quick one.
No change in the dollar amount, 750 per occurrence?
I love how old-school this is.
Detach error check here.
Yeah, it's actually, if you look at it, it's cut off because I'm like trying to fit it in the copier to see. Each is different.
Entertain a motion for the mowing contract?
I'll move approval of the mowing contract.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next item, discussion, consideration of Nick's backup leaf vac, which has already been purchased.
Because it's par for the course this year. Nothing ever's going exactly the way that we think it is. But the leaf vac didn't actually go down. It was the hydraulic arm so we could reduce manpower that actually went down. But it did bring to light the fact that if the leaf vac goes down, what is our backup? We're relying on other communities in the area that are picking up leaves at the same time to help us out. So the first thing that Nick did was reach out to all of the companies and see whether or not they had one that they could rent on a seasonal basis. And the leaf vac isn't something they keep on the lot for rental purposes. So they happen to have this one on a trade. We got it for $82.50. We now have two. We have a backup in this instance where we had snow on Halloween. We can actually send out two groups.
Anything you wanna add, Nick? It's already been purchased, so...
Nothing to add, just if there was any questions regarding it.
Anybody?
No.
It's 640 hours low.
It seems, I mean, it's in great condition. Had a new alternator on it. It came from a local town, Durant. I actually posed the question, "Why they didn't keep it for a backup?" Because they bought a brand-new machine just like ours, only fully automated, at the tune of 130,000.
Wow.
So I feel like both vacs we've purchased have been pretty good deals. Durant was unable, they don't have enough storage here, which, like, well, kind of in that boat, too.
Wanna read some of our stories?
Chris, do you need a motion since it's already happened?
You do, just for the formal.
I'll move to approve the backup leaf vac purchase.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Next item, discussion, consideration of silver sneaker program at the LBC.
I wanted Matt to come and talk about this program because I think it's a great program, but there are some small differences in what they'll reimburse to us versus what we're planning on charging. And I wanted him to present that to the council, make sure that you're okay. It's not a program that we have to offer. It is a program that we feel like we should offer and... It is a program that we feel like we should offer, and some of this is statistics that he can give you, tell you why.
Thank you. Do I need to give a rundown of what Silver Sneakers is?
Yes.
Should I start with that? So, there are certain, there's certain health insurance companies that will reimburse individual clients with a, for a membership, if they have a membership to a local facility. Silver Sneakers happens to be partnering with Humana. There's a couple of others, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but Humana just comes to ring the bell. And basically, Humana will pay for, or reimburse the facility for each visit that that patron does to your, to your facility. So, for example, let's just say Jamie has Silver Sneakers and he signs up for a membership with Silver Sneakers membership with the City of Mount Vernon and Leicester Bridge Center. We get reimbursed $2.50 for each visit that you occur in our facility, up to a maximum of $20. That's what Silver Sneakers does. So, it's a maximum. Well, if you know-
Is that max over the year or?
It's per month, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, per month. So, if you factor in what a membership costs for a senior, because Silver Sneakers is a senior program, it's 65 and up. There's another program, sorry, called Prime, under the same health insurance for 18 years old to 64. But it's, I'm just going to push that aside for a second, I'll come back to that. So, they reimburse for up to a maximum of $20 per month, while our membership fee for a senior is 25, if it's an annual membership. So, we're only going to be reimbursed for 20, so there's a $5 gap. So, but where we could make up that difference is if there's a couple senior that signs up, our couple membership is $30, we could be reimbursed $40 for that. So, I guess I'm here today to see if we want to pursue that membership in regards to knowing that we might have with an individual a $5 loss, or we could turn around and ask that individual to make up the difference, which they may or may not want to get a membership if they have to pay.
So, how are we envisioning the structure of this? Because we only get reimbursed if they show up.
Correct. So, that's our job-
Okay.
-to make sure we program. And it doesn't have to be, so traditionally, facilities will offer exercise programs.
Right.
Give you an example, the YMCA does a really good job with Silver Sneakers, but the YMCA is a health club, basically. We have the opportunity to offer additional things for seniors, bingo, maybe senior trips, pickleball, maybe some other avenues.
So, they could come in for coffee 10 times over the month.
Coffee for 10 times. As long as they swipe their card. Exactly.
We don't care why they're there.
We don't care why they're there. Nobody, it's just, it's socialization, health, a lot of reasons for somebody to visit your facility. It doesn't necessarily-
But are we envisioning charging them and then somehow reimbursing them?
No. The insurance company will ask for a report of how many visits they had.
Okay.
We'll give that to them and they'll reimburse us for the visits that they had.
So, if you think about it this way, if everybody came through the door through the Silver Sneaker program and were singles, we would lose $5 a month per membership for each of those individuals. Now, if they're couples, we actually come out ahead because our monthly rate is 30 and their reimbursement is 40. So, we're hoping to be somewhere in the middle. The question to council is, we can offer a discount. So, if we accept the Silver Sneaker program right now, we would have to ask them to make up the difference. Our concern is, is do we lose people that aren't going to want to pay the additional $5 per month?
But that's part of their incentive to go.
I get that, but my concern is, if we accept the program and Bob doesn't show up 10 times-
Right. Right. That's my point.
Now, he's got a full membership, but we get $2.
Yeah, so their stake in the game is that they've got to show up.
They have to, not necessarily, because they have to swipe their card when they-
But how do they, I guess my question is, how do they get the card in the first place? Are we, I mean, are they just going to come in and sign up and they say, "I've got Humana and here's the deal and I'm part of the Silver Sneakers"?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if somebody comes in and swipes their card, so there's really not any way that they're going to get a full year's membership to use a facility without us getting our reimbursement, because they have to swipe their card, check in when they come in through the door. We submit to that to the insurance company and we get reimbursed.
But we have to do all that paperwork? You're going to have to do that paperwork?
Yes.
Where is it that they, so, how many people is this affecting? I mean, do we have any idea how many people are at Humana?
Eligible within three, excuse me, eligible within five miles of our facility, there are 392 people eligible. Currently, there are 40 people taking advantage of that somewhere at some facility within five miles. Okay? So, it's 350 people out there that haven't, either they haven't been marketed to, don't know about it, don't want to use it, whatever it may be, that we have an opportunity to tap into.
We get reimbursed every time they walk through the door.
Yep.
So, if they don't walk through the door, we're not out any.
There's no loss to us.
So, we just give them a membership?
They're still paying.
Well, not necessarily.
They're still paying for the membership.
We call it a membership, but really it's-
Yes, we call it a membership, but they have to scan their card every time, which we get reimbursed for. Now, if they don't do the full amount, I mean, we're still getting a reimbursement for it.
And to be fair, they're not showing up anyway, so it's not like it really-
No. What we're saying is, if they come, they're allotted, is it 10, 10 times a month?
Eight times a month would be-
If they come there allotted eight times a month for 12 months, we will end up $5 a month short at the end.
That part I'm not worried about. Because that'll be a wash between, no.
That's the only concern that we have, because that's considered a discount and it's not something staff can do. But what we're, what we're trying to get at is, there's 300 and-
50 people out there that we could capitalize on that aren't currently getting membership, that could get a membership free to them.
If we capture 10 of those individuals at $200 a year, we're likely ahead.
Yeah.
Because it's probably not people that we were going to get memberships for.
They're not going to be ripping down our basketball hoops.
Right. They're going to be the least impacted.
Correct.
Likely not.
Right. I mean, not to, not to go too far down the gaming the system rabbit hole, but somehow we've got to give them that card, right? So, now they have, they have a membership.
Yeah.
With rental facilities, with renting of the place, we give a discount to members. So, they could become a member, rent the facility, never show up, never use any of it, and get that discount.
Well, they would-
And not pay us a penny and we haven't gotten reimbursed.
Yeah, and I don't see them as being actually the same level of membership as what an annual contributor would be.
Okay.
Because again, they're, they don't fall into that category.
I mean, you see what I'm saying, right?
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind that we have-
So, are you saying that they would have a different card?
No, we have rules in place for that as well, because there's really technically not anything, I mean, you could come in and sign up for a year membership and get the monthly allocation, sign up six months from now to rent the entire facility at the member rate, and then-
Cancel.
Then cancel.
Right.
Well, then, when you come in to settle your bill for the rental, you're paying the non-member rate. So, we've already established a rule against that happening. So, we've done as much as we can. We've tried to prevent some of those issues.
Right, and I know there isn't, yeah, I'm just saying, you know, because somehow we got to mark them as a member to get them a card, to be able to track the thing, to get reimbursement.
They would have a Silver Sneakers membership is what we call it. Theoretically, it's almost a class.
Right.
And we don't necessarily feel like we're really going to lose anything unless we get the full membership. I mean, at the end of the year, where we're going to lose is, you know, a $60 difference.
Right. And I think you're probably right, between the wash between the singles and the couples. I mean, I think that'll, at worst, we're out a little.
I can't give you numbers on that, but, you know-
I'd be surprised.
We're assuming that if, for $5 more, you can add a spouse to your membership-
Yeah.
-as a couple, a senior, that's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
And that helps us capture that. So, we're coming up with a plan, how to market the 350 people that we have, or, you know, we don't know where they are, who they are, but we're going to come up with a plan to market to those individuals, find out. We can work with Humana as well.
Are those 350 in that age group, or 350 who are in that age group and Humana?
350 in that age group that have the insurance.
That would be eligible.
That Humana has recognized.
All right, so it's down that, down that granular.
Down to that level.
Okay.
Yep, correct.
So, we just need a, you just want a motion to say yes to Silver Sneakers already?
Yeah, you don't even have to provide us a motion, it's just, we need to make sure that you're okay, because like I said, it's kind of a recognizable, like I said, at the end of the year, it can be a recognizable discount.
And at this time, if I may real quick, just add, there's a couple of other programs. One, we haven't looked at yet, we're looking into is United Healthcare. But two, there's some others called ASH Fitness, which incorporates Cigna Health Partners and State Farm. They have another, they have a program called Silver and Fit that they would offer, if they were the only partners in the building, not with Silver Sneakers, if they were the only ones, they would offer $3 a visit, up to $30 maximum, which is great. But when I give you the numbers of these individuals eligible within five miles, there's 15 people.
Yeah.
See the difference?
Yeah.
So, we can add these other programs, but like ASH Fitness, if Silver Sneakers is already in our facility, they would match what Silver Sneakers offers, they wouldn't give you the additional. So, we can, but there's others out there that we're investigating as well. The Silver Sneakers to us seems like the most, as far as quantity of number of people that are eligible, that we're going to target, that we'll reimburse for.
All right. Cool. Thanks, Matthew.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Next item, discussion consideration of marketing expenditures for membership drive.
This is just $1,000 over my spending limit, but this is all part of the marketing plan. This is a membership drive. We will have the grand openings, soft opening, I mean, we'll have a number of things in the market expected coming forward, but this was outside of the original scope. This is important to us, obviously, so.
Yeah.
If I may add, we are looking at doing a membership drive December 11th and December 14th, two nights. You still will be eligible to sign up for a membership outside of that, but we're having two of those nights, similar like we did our rental, where the first night, December 11th, you come, ask questions, learn about the building, actually sign up for a membership. As you recognized last month, thank you for offering the free month individuals, so we're going to be promoting that. That'll be the first opportunity people get a membership is December 11th. It'll be from 7:00 to 8:30 upstairs in City Hall. And then, on December 14th, from 12:00 to 2:00, they'll be able to come in and get their membership as well, kind of like we do swim lessons, where you come in and get your membership. The nice thing about this, though, is they're just going to drop off the membership application, they won't give us any money at that time, which sounds really weird, but we're not charging for the first month, so we're not collecting funds at that time. So, we will have a position in place where we can share with them that the first monthly installment would come out either February 1st, or they pay in full at some point in time. So, the hardest part I have is, right now, we don't have an exact opening date, so I can't tell you how exactly it's going to function.
So, Matt, when I first read this, I was, it struck me because I felt like when De Novo gave us the first, the bid, I thought that that included the opening, and marketing the opening. Is the issue that this $4,000 is tied to that, the drive event?
Correct.
Specific to December 11th and 14th, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
We will have additional marketing that we'll have to purchase too, that some of the ads that we came up with are part of, I guess, the design. However, where we run them and how we run them will be-
Oh, yeah, the, all the phase.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yes, this is specifically outside of what we originally asked them in the scope. I think Matt and Sarah just approved 10 pieces or eight pieces?
Nine official, 10 official, but two of them counted as one.
So, they've settled on that.
So, 10 pieces of collateral, of print collateral that they're going to provide for us, letterhead, envelopes-
That's good.
...website template, email template, a couple of other pieces, I can't remember off the top of my head. So, we just approved those things and some of them are priority high, that we need right away, some of them are a priority when we open. Oh, VIP envelopes and postcards for the grand opening, for the VIP grand opening. And then, general grand opening information and posters as well, so.
So, just something to consider, it just kind of flew into my head. You know, we're coming to the end of the year where we need to thank our donors that contributed in this calendar year and remind them of their commitment if they have some remaining. Do you want that to go out on the city, on the letterhead of the facility? And if so, just kind of keep that in mind as you do your ordering.
No, I think what I would, I would rather it come out just on city, regular city letterhead.
It came out on CCBG last year.
Right. Just trying to keep the-
Yeah, and that's fine, I just, for maybe less confusion.
But that is a, but that is a pretty solid target group for opening, here's the dates, here's paperwork.
Yeah, as far as inviting them, they're part of that group. I just want to keep-
The thank you is separate.
Yeah.
Yep.
The thank you from the money collection portion of it.
Whatever date that may be, we anticipate having two grand openings, one VIP and committee donors, people that have helped get this off the ground after 20 years, and then the second one will be general public grand opening. So, obviously, the first one, the VIP one, would be earlier, and then the grand opening for the general public would be second, coming secondary.
I assume a dodgeball tournament will be involved.
Whatever you want, Scott.
Maybe in the overall, I think the VIP was, we expect to have some catered food. I mean, there are a lot of people, I think, to thank.
Yeah.
Here's something included, obviously, for making this a reality after 20 years.
So, we need a motion for the four grand, correct?
Correct.
I would move approval of the grand opening marketing contract with De Novo for the $4,000.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. Next item, discussion consideration of Iowa DOT transfer agreement number 2017-4-131.
You do not need a motion on this tonight, but I did want to get this in front of you because they're looking to want to make the transfer by the end of this year. Our engineers have not given us their feedback on the review of this yet, but basically, what it amounts to is they're not fixing the road, which is typical. They're going to pay us to, what it would cost, basically, to bring it up to today's standards.
Where's the money to fix the roundabout where it got scraped?
Not part of this.
Oh, but I want, I want to see that in there before we get that, because it's been too long that that has to be done.
That's insurance, correct?
Well, it obviously went to the state.
The DOT, yeah.
Yeah, so they need to have that in there.
Yeah, this would be completely separate from, from that.
Is that two miles?
That's going to be a big chunk of money, I'd think.
I'm not saying that we would have to accept this number. As I explained in the mayor, I'm not exactly, because I've never transferred to a jurisdiction like this, I don't know the legalities of what this money can be used for. I can tell you, we will need a different piece of equipment that we're trying to analyze right now, and the cost ranges from $150,000 all the way to $220,000, depending on the piece of equipment that we end up looking at. So, going through that process right now, but I didn't want to sit on this, I wanted you to at least see it, so there wasn't a surprise moving forward, and just know that we're going to be working with the engineers as we move forward, trying to get this. But this is what the DOT is offering initially.
Is there like a drop dead date where we have to have an amount agreed to?
Not necessarily. They obviously would like to get it done before the calendar year is complete. They also know that we've agreed to take yield right away. It's just a matter of agreeing to their numbers.
Anybody have any questions?
You might want to try to get something in there for the screw up of not having that raised lip on the, on the inner circle. You know, when they screwed up, when they, when they did the roundabouts, that raised lip should have been three inches instead of the, the small amount, which is the reason why our roundabout is messed up. People are running up on that.
On the truck apron?
You know, you might want to try to negotiate something, because, you know, they were the ones in charge of that, and they were the ones that should have put the contractor to the test on it, and they didn't get it done, so something, a little something, something on the side.
I want to be realistic with all of you, that I can't, this isn't a negotiate, negotiation for the roundabout. I don't know fully if we can do that.
That's a separate project, but yeah.
I'm just, I'm being, I can ask the engineers.
Well, they still have, they'll still have part of the one there, but 10, the 10th will be ours then, and that's, part of their screw up will be totally ours then.
Yeah, I just, I want to be realistic with you that I don't know that I can blur the two lines I have.
Yeah, the transfer and a roundabout that they screwed up on, totally did us, so yeah, I would think it would be part of the negotiation, I would think, but, because now we got a, we got 100% responsibility for that now, so, anyway.
Nick, do you have something?
Just a, it's kind of nice that we've had Lynn County give us an estimate of what their project entails, so we haven't had our engineers to take a look at this bid hopefully yet, but if you take Lynn County's bid, that's a two-inch overlay, or grind and then overlay, it comes out to $400,000 per mile, and right now, the state's right at three inches, about, what, $210 per mile, something like that, two, something, so I think we probably need to try.
Yeah, we plan to read it, I just looked at, this is their initial salary to us.
Yep, this is just a heads up. No, it's good.
What if they spent $98 million on this project? They should have a little bit of money left over.
All right, next item, discussion, consideration of change order number 41 for LBC. Chris?
I did not put this on your change order amount. It's in the amount of $1,499.40. This is to add a polished sealant to the first floor, main hallway, entryway, where they're doing kind of a, you know, it's called a, it's called brachial plate. They're just grinding down to the aggregate.
So, you can see the?
Yes.
The flakes or the, yeah.
For our maintenance purposes, the sealant wasn't required, still isn't required. This is kind of a staff, I guess, ask that we have a sealant on this floor, because we're going to be maintaining it moving forward.
How many square feet is that? Because all it says is 1,400 bucks. I like to see, you know, 300 square feet add this much. I never like seeing just a number, it just, it's, I like details, and that doesn't show me any details, it just shows me 40, it could be five square feet for all I know.
25, is it, you think that area is about 25 feet wide? 20 feet wide by the, 25, 20, 25 feet wide by the length of the building, plus the entryway.
It's always a large space.
From on now, I'd like to see more stuff like that.
Yeah, and a lot of, like I said, the unfortunate part about this one is it came at the nth hour on Friday, and again, I try to get these in front of you when I can, so I'm not, I mean, I can approve this one, getting it on a Friday before the meeting, you don't always get all of the information right off the bat, so I just wanted to get it in front of you and.
Has it, has this already been done, or no?
No. As a matter of fact, if you go over there right now, they're in the process of grinding the floor where this is to be done at.
So often does it feel like to be replaced?
It all depends on the wear and tear.
So, it isn't a one and done, which is, which is fine.
Correct. The expectation or the hope is that, more frequently than not?
Hang for a while.
Because that means it's getting used a lot.
Storing its job.
Okay, so, just, this is a little bit ancillary, but I'm thinking about it as I'm envisioning that entryway, and this is going to be January, people are going to be walking in, lots of water, snow, et cetera, and in terms of slipping and, you know, keeping it safe, what do we, what's our, is there a plan? Have you guys, I mean, are there going to be some sort of rubber mats? I mean, that floor is going to be dangerous.
We will likely contract with a service on the mats, because they come in and clean them. We have the ability to order mats with the logo and do things like that. 90% of the time, it's easier to go with a company.
Yeah, keep it simple.
Yeah, I've had conversations with a couple of leasing companies, or not janitorial, but citywide, city cleaners, where they lease out.
We haven't settled on anything yet, but yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure this is discussion, because we got to, because there's going to be sweat floors.
In the entryway, in the hallway.
Right, so what we've been waiting on is a lot of the flooring to be done, so that we can have them come through our facility and make recommendations for that, so I've got a couple on standby right now.
We also have, not part of the original bid, but, you know, we talked about the coverings for the gym floors when we ran out of the facility for things other than basketball and volleyball, so all of that will be coming, again, to you here in the near future. We're just, like everything else, kind of waiting on them to get to that point where we can have other people come in and take a look at it.
We're going to have a fun December, let's just put it that way.
Yeah.
But, so if we have bleachers going on in the gymnasium, we want to be able to put something down to protect the floor. I can tell you, the high school is considering doing the Shirley Ryan Invitational, hosting some games in our facility next September, Labor Day weekend, so it's a big volleyball tournament, they're adding more teams to it, with us being the state champs, we're now, you know, top dogs, everybody wants to play in the tournament. So, we're going to have to have ways of protecting the floor with that. We've got a wedding that's rented out the entire facility on September 19th of next year. Obviously, they're going to have a dance floor, they're going to have people with heels on, they're going to have people with, you know, black sole shoes, so we want to have ways of protecting that floor, so we're not consistently every day having to take those black marks out or repair the floor and so forth, so. But, you know, underwater fountains, you want to have matting there, so that when the water drips, it's not slippery, all kinds of little places we're looking at for inappropriate things.
All right, entertain a motion for this.
I'll move approval of that expenditure for the first floor and entryway.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion, consideration of setting a public hearing date for the final plat for Brolick Third Edition, two-mile extra territorial review. Chris?
Nothing spectacular, it's just a one-lot deal, so.
So, we just need to?
Set the date.
We're doing the next council.
December 2nd.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve, set a public hearing date for the final plat for the third edition for the December 2nd meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item, Mount Vernon Police Report. Chief, what do you got for us, sir?
Nothing additional.
Anybody have any questions for Chief?
Little accident.
Yeah, I saw that.
Especially with that snow, that was a pleasant surprise, unless they all occurred after midnight.
Probably did.
We're back in the roundabout.
November, the number.
All right, next item, Mount Vernon Public Works Report. I see Nick creeping up. Nick, what do you got?
Mayor Council, just want to reiterate that we've been, well, we're starting to tell people that we'll add two to three weeks onto the leaf pickup, just because of the weather, and adding that two to three weeks is also weather dependent, so.
Are you guys out doing leaves right now?
We are, we got back out there today. The snow's melted enough that we can start getting after some, so hopefully tomorrow, we'll have more bodies available, maybe have both units out, so.
So, will those units pick up when the, when the leaves are just soggy wet?
Not as easily as when they're not.
I would think, yeah, I mean.
It just slows it down a bit, too.
Since we've taken over, it's just the difference, so we have gentlemen out, public works staff outraking as we're doing it, so if they can fluff the leaves a little bit, it does pick it up, I mean, they're still wet, but, you know, it's not a knock at WOFC as far as what they were doing, it's just, we're able to control certain things now and make some adaptations, but we use more staff than basically a one-person crew before. So, again, where we have situations like this, where we have snow that is melting away, we're able to have two or three people working on it, fluffing it with rakes, and look happy doing it.
Tom, did you have something?
Nick, I had one quick question for you, and this might be for Chris, too, but the quiet zone.
Oh, yeah.
There were signs, and it was blocked, and there no longer are, and it looks the same as it did before.
So, the contractor had a subcontractor.
Who had a subcontractor.
For the signs, the warning signs, did not communicate to one another as far as the date changing. We are still waiting for UP to sign off on.
Okay, that's, I assumed that's where the root of it was.
We could, we were told to fill out one permit, that wasn't the permit we needed to fill out, filled out another, they apparently didn't get it, filled it out again, got acknowledgement that they received this one. You can't rush this permit, apparently. We could allow Perktoban to do the work outside of the right-of-way. However, they're amicable to, amenable to starting and spraying. There's no point in doing the work outside of the railroad right-of-way this year, only have to come back and block it off.
Block it off again.
So, our consensus is if we're going to block it off, let's do it once, let them get in, get out, and the hope is that we can time all of this work, because we have the wagon pass and the bridge over the railroad, and then first street coming through, we have a lot of work coming in in that section.
Shut every way down, down at once.
So, our goal is to allow Perktoban to get in, get out, have that open so that we can detour traffic if we need to.
So, we're estimating spring, is the idea, okay, all right.
Good, Nick, anything else?
Thanks, Matthew.
All right, next item, Mount Vernon Parks and Rec. Matthew, anything else for the council?
Nothing to add.
Anybody have any questions for Matthew? Seeing no one, all right.
Magical, I do have one quick question. We're shutting down the whole street for magical, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
All right, next item, Police Department Preliminary Design Board.
So, I had.
Sure, nice way to ease it.
Bring this to the council tonight. He's been invited to Lions Club, certain places around the community to give presentations. Now that we own the facility, this is just kind of a preliminary design that the Police Department did internally, and created a board so that we could have talking points, but as Doug and I were talking about it, you should probably see this before we go out and talk about it in public.
Learn, learn from past mistakes.
This, yes, that, too. This is strictly our concept when we're talking to different contractors and things right now, on how we see an efficient, effective flow coming, coming through, and how we would allocate the use of the building. This does not answer the questions that we can put a garage here, or that we can do any of that, or what the cost of the garage is versus building a standalone outside or something along those lines. So, I want to be very clear on that as well, that this is strictly just from us, is using the current structure that we have, the current space we have, this would be an option that would flow very well. And so, I'm just going to kind of walk through it, and I shared some of the email with you guys in a little bit more detail, just to kind of give you some heads up on it, but there's some things that are going on, and it kind of goes back to some of the questions before, even with RC, you know, the partnerships that we would be looking for, or looking at as possibilities as we go through. So, I want to definitely give you my mindset on the, on the facility as we're coming through, and just kind of walk through some of that, but if you, blow you guys out here on feedback or anything from that standpoint, but the, this side, this section over here is the east parking lot. This is where we would envision the patrol officers, this is, this whole section right here, as we talked about before, is the, I'll have everybody up here, please. As we come through here on this side over here, the, this will be the heart of the police operations. So, we talked about before about having some confidential, making sure that the area is secured down, so it's not a lot of public activity going on in that location. This is going to be the heart of what we're talking about, this is where a lot of the work's going to be done on a day-to-day basis, from the standpoint, from there. Initially, we're looking at right now, the, the back sections, if you remember those bathrooms that are back in there, they're kind of cobbled together and stuff like that. We're looking to transition this office, this front office here, and the bathroom, into like a female locker room, and the other restroom here, and possibly this section into a men's locker room. Equipping those with showers at some point to accommodate the officers, having the ability if they go to a bad call or needed to decontaminate, change their uniform, they can do that on site. Currently, they usually run home and contaminate their entire house with different things like that, so that's kind of a problem from our perspective as an employer. And so, if we can address that here, it's a good opportunity to do that, coming in from this standpoint here. Depending on, so there's, like you said, the initial thought with, if we're renting space to, to RC Rail, the Local Drug Coalition, we have the option, the offices here, or here, depending on what we find out through construction and different things like that, so we've got some flexibility, both of those are workable for them. Kind of flowing down through here, like I said, most of the police operations would land here. If we were going to put RC Rail out here, these would become our interview rooms. Everybody keeps asking where the holding cells are, and if we're not doing holding cell, that's a whole nother can of worms when you get into, like, putting somebody here that you're going to hold for a while, whole other regulations, a lot more staff, different things like that. So, the most secure facility we would have in this location would be interview rooms that will be secure. We can put somebody in there, know that they're not going to be wandering the entire building or anything like that, they'll be in a private location, away from most of the public and things like that, so we can conduct interviews effectively, privately, as we need to on some of those. So, we have some flexibility built into that. This whole concept here, this is the sanctuary, so north is up here, and we would be looking at, there's a walk-in door here, possibly cutting a 16-foot garage door here, and turning a large section of this into the garage. Basically, building the garage inside of the current walls that are there. It would be mason-walled, hard-decked on top, if you remember how tall the ceilings were in there, that allows for the second story of that garage to be our record storage and the city's record storage for a lot of activity there. This will become, this will be all part of the mason walls, so this will be the evidence room and the evidence processing room. So, basically, we bring evidence in, we can land it right here, it doesn't have to occupy the rest of the building or anything like that, it's close, when we're done with the evidence and we can dispose of it, it goes right back into our vehicles and right back out. So, very close and efficient from that standpoint, and it will be vented so that we don't contaminate the entire city hall with strange odors after we've made arrests and stuff like that, so.
And I assume that room would be quite large.
Yes.
So, is there enough space in what you're planning there to consolidate all the other places that you've got the evidence now?
And obviously, a lot of room for growth.
This area, especially, this, this area right here is going to be a ton of space when you look at, you know, the estimated garage size is approximately 40 by 40, so about a 1,600 square foot garage, but when you throw that hard deck on top of it, and you can use that second story for all that record storage, really opens up a lot of things for us from that standpoint as we come through. So, this is where we envision the public entrance coming in, this is the west parking lot again, they would come in here, they would be into the lobby. I'm working on the avenues for the public communication portion of that. One must is a phone in here, outdoors, outside doors would be unlocked, there would be a phone in, they would be able to get into the vestibule area, pick up a phone and call the, auto dial, you don't have to pick up, you just pick up the phone, go straight, go straight to dispatch, contact them, let them know that they need to see an officer if we don't have somebody in the building at the time, because you have that possibility, and it will happen as we come through. So, having that direct communication, we're also, I'm also looking into, there's the technology, we're going to be doing like the secure door entrances, like we have here at City Hall with the key card access, where dispatch may have the ability to push a button, allow them to come in here into the lobby, once they've contacted dispatch and they know an officer's coming, we could get them into the lobby, into a more climate-controlled warmer area, and then a more secure area as well, if there was somebody that showed up, you know, possibly we get somebody that's fleeing a violent situation or something like that coming to the police for help, we could get them in there and have that area kind of locked down for them. It would be covered with video cameras and stuff like that until we got there as well. So, not, this would all be restricted in this area, and then, this also allows for the future expansion. If we get a receptionist or anything, we'd be looking at that and the use of those offices compared to where we're at from there, so. This other office over here, I would be trying to, one of my concepts is turning that into a restroom, so you have a public use restroom on that side. If you remember, all the other restrooms are here, here, and here in the building, so they're very limited from that aspect. This one restroom is ADA compliant already, and is my understanding, and allows us, like if we're partnering with people, or we could even escort to that restroom, and still keep them fairly limited exposure and things from there, so. Just wanted, like I said, more of an opportunity for me to give you our concept and what we're thinking, what we're talking to the people that have the degrees that go along with trying to design and give us, give us the input as well, but I definitely wanted to give you our mindset.
Well, that was going to be one of my questions, is it, I mean, you know, VK, our, I believe, general engineers, I got to believe there are folks out there that do specific police station and are aware of the security measures necessary and?
Correct.
Like, all of that, so, are those the folks that we're talking to about this?
We've talked to a few of them.
All right, okay.
Chief, what's that large brown area above the?
Oh, sorry, I didn't even talk about that.
Yeah.
So, this area here is the basketball court, where the basketball hoop is right now. We would turn that entire concept, that entire area into a large meeting room, training room. This would also be, we talked about, remember, initially having like an emergency operations center, if there's a critical incident that hits Mount Vernon, we can operate out of there, we would do that here. On a day-to-day basis, if anybody needed to use the facility or wanted, you know, host a training for up to maybe 50 people or something like that, it would be a conference room, training room, large room like this, that they room, training room, large room like this, that they would be able to do that. We can limit the access to the public into that building area and have everything else restricted off, so they don't, they're not, you know, we don't need to be there to watch them or deal with any of that. The biggest question that'll come out of that is just making sure we get restroom facilities to accommodate whatever they're doing there, but if it's, somebody needs to come in and have a big room to do a one-hour meeting or a presentation or something like that, it would be definitely something that they could use publicly. We could also use it regionally for law enforcement training and stuff like that. Be a great opportunity.
We do have all those tall officers that can use the basketball court, too.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Keeping shape.
That's right.
Anybody have any questions?
Questions, I just wanted, like I said, to make sure you're just going on that thing and what we're talking.
How are you guys coming on the list of stuff to dispose of?
I have the list, we were hoping to have it to you, we'll probably have it ready for that calendar. We have...
Nick, just say that. That's a no.
It's not just my department that we're waiting on.
Oh, you guys are getting in on this, too.
We're trying to bring you one citywide list of everything that we're doing from that standpoint. I pretty much got mine narrowed down, I did have a piano appraisal come, Fraser come in today, so I wanted to make sure we get those things appraised, so we understand at least what the fair value is on those before we decide how we want to dispose of them, so that we've got some information. I've been paying a little bit of money to have that done, but I think we'll get that back in effective, as we're kind of coming through on the inside of that, too, so.
One thing to keep in mind when we go out, and by we, I mean you, messaging on this, it doesn't, in my experience, it doesn't matter how many times we tell people, this is our concept, this will change, this is what they're going to hear.
Right.
So, when we do get the final concept, we're going to just have to over-communicate that as well, and go back to whoever we already talked to. Say, okay, remember that conversation? Here's what stayed, and here's what is now different, so.
Really good points, guys.
Just something to consider.
It was like, you know, we were kind of holding off, but then people are keeping, like, hey, let's talk about...
Well, right, now that we have the keys, why are we not moving? Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's exciting, yeah, absolutely, I get it, I absolutely get it.
The other key to this, because I've been asked a lot, is, you know, under grants in New City Hall, to this facility, as you can see, no.
Yeah.
And we would be taking a step backwards by even attempting to do that, so, you know, the two biggest things right there right now are, one, we're going to City Hall, but the two, we got a purchase, but there's absolutely no money budgeted for anything we're selling this for, so this concept could take 10 years to complete.
You could hear his heart break, couldn't you?
Yeah, exactly.
Somebody would be retired before that.
That's right. You know, if, for instance, putting the garage aside, the building is a half-a-million-dollar endeavor, it's not happening within the next three to four years, right now.
I think everybody understands this will be a slow, I mean, this wasn't even planned a few months ago.
I don't know that that's true, actually. I mean, I think that's the other thing that we have to communicate, is, you know...
Could very well be the case.
We, because it was a surprise, and because it was an opportunity that we felt was worth jumping on, we hadn't considered budgeting for actually doing anything.
Yeah, we are, our goal is to get operations out of there comfortably, and then each step beyond that becomes another question, but for the most part, we have three things. We need this open so that they can operate out of the facility.
Yep.
We need to answer the question as it relates to RC Rail, whether or not we can jump from one side of the building or the next, or go there, and then, what do we do with the vehicles?
About 15 more phases.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's a good start, chief.
Yeah, phased approach.
Good start.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else?
Thanks, chief.
All right, next item, reports. I don't have anything to share. Anybody from council committee have anything to share?
Nope.
Chris, anything you want to highlight on your report?
Just a reminder that, of the meeting next Monday.
What time is that?
I will send out the email for sure, but I think it's 6:30.
My son has a choir concert that night, so.
You know what, you're going to have at least, because we want to assist this, I have to advertise it as a joint meeting.